Call the school committee meeting to order. We stand for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Horgan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Constitution, one nation, under God, in the here for liberty and justice for all.
School committee members and student reports will take place now. There will be no school chair report tonight. Resource and school buildings. I'm just going to mention a couple of things that are on the agenda for tonight. And the report will be given at the next school committee meeting. We will be approving some donations and summer pay. That's the only thing that was talked about. Policy committee, nothing new to report. Student support committee, Dr. Knight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. All right. By provisions of the open meeting laws and sunshine laws, the student support subcommittee met on April 14th of the year 2022 in the office of the superintendent of schools. Our vision is to go above and beyond by positioning all of our students to achieve academic success in a safe environment and acquiring the necessary knowledge to begin closing our district's existing academic achievement gap. The items that were covered. Number one, the minutes from the last meeting on October 7th of 2021 was approved. Number two, Assistant Superintendent Jonathan Thompson presented an update with the Fall Diagnostic and Midyear Internal Assessment, I Ready. 3,325 students out of 3,653 took the test and he presented percentages of improvement that were shown in the different test areas. Number three, we were also presented with an athletic update by the athletic director, Craig Antoci. And one of the things that came to my attention that I want to do something about is there's a $50 registration fee for each one of the students to participate. And since I was students, a large percentage of them are below poverty level. It tends to be a problem, so we want to do a little bit more about that. Number four, there were also some updates on the new memorandum of understanding between the Fitchburg Public School System and the Fitchburg Police Department concerning the School Resource Officer, SRO. And this was presented by Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Craig Califox, who will be retiring soon. Number five, I also addressed Longs Joe Middle School's physical appearance and suggested raising funds and writing grants for improvement, which is essential for our students to acquire new knowledge. Superintendent Jokula explained that we recently did the roof of that facility. Therefore, we are looking forward to doing more for that building. Number six, I will make an appointment with Ms. Cali Cavalo, a person at the main office that writes grants so that we can raise some funds to be able to address those issues. And the last step before I have my colleague, Ms. Rosemary Reynolds, read the minutes that was given to me. I put together the minutes because I didn't get them before, so I didn't want to not have the, you know, the minutes for tonight. But anyways, I spoke to Mr. Stevens about registration for the M.A.S.K. Annual Convention, and he gave me some valuable information about the registration process. It's a school committee member convention that would take place for three days in November. And it is my desire to attend and to learn everything that would position me to be the most effective chair of the Student Support Subcommittee for Fitchburg Public Schools. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair. And Rosemary would go over the details of the minutes that I just got.
Thank you very much. It was an interesting meeting that we had. And with the new life that's injected into our group, it's, it seems like we can have a positive trajectory in the future. We, basically, I think you said you covered it all.
But I didn't read what was on this document.
Oh, you want me to read that?
If you don't mind. Yes, please.
Okay.
Just read it.
Okay, okay. Review of minutes from October 7th, 2022. Rosemary, please note that, Rosemary, I said, this is something that I said, please note that I am very much against item two on the minutes from 10/7/21, which quote said supportive LGBTQ students. Sally Cragan has been working with the youth at the youth library. The committee questioned what support has been made at the schools. There are clubs at Memorial and FHS Spectrum Club. And my points that were presented and highlighted here is the parents are very concerned that it is sexualizing the children. That the second point is that it should not be teaching that these lifestyles are healthy lifestyles. Mind you, since we're talking about something that I said, 100% in support of each and every student and each and every human being. So let that never be a question when you speak to me about the issues of lifestyle. Bible doesn't approve of that behavior, but we need to support the students. That was something that someone else brought up. All children are human beings. Rosemary does not agree. It doesn't follow sequentially. I don't know what that, I do agree, all children are human beings.
Yes, okay.
I just don't agree with the dissemination of what's, what's being widely spread in our culture in that a lot of parents have spoken to me about the issue, and it needs clarification as we go forward. Midyear updates based on internal assessments. Ready assessment, three times a year. K to eight reading and math, also grades nine and 10 for math. Students are placed in a developmental pathway for learning each time assessments are given. Students then work in the application on skills targeted by test results. Grades K to eight reading, fall. Red, these colors were symbolic of positioning. Red was 43%, eight, yellow was 38%, and green was 10%. In the spring, the red was 33%, the yellow was 33%, and the green had come up to 34%. Expectations were the same, spring and fall, and year to year, so no changes due to the Decreased students in red by 10%, decreased students in yellow by 5%, increased green by 24%, making progress in all domains. To whomever is listening to this, I'm sure that does not, you can't apply what those colors mean, and I would need to be refreshed by Mr. Thompson as to what each color signified. Let me see. So, okay, making progress in all domains. Well, there's more numbers here, but I've been asked to read it, so I shall. Red equals 49%, yellow 40%, green 10%. High-level view, we can reconvene in June. Dr. Knight, what percent were not able to take the assessment in the fall 2021? A majority has, has taken the test. Athletic update, Craig Antoci, Antoci? Toci? Slides were attached. Learned video games played in the unison. That's a new sport that's been presented to the children to take part in. Strategy-oriented, supported by the MIAA Sport. Rosemary Doolin Reynolds is wondering if there could be an incentive to continue sportsmanship after a sport has ended, technically ended. Challenges, lack of field space. HQ, I suppose that means high-quality fields place. Struggling recreation programs, struggling with the feeder system into the programs, and also high poverty slash high-needs environment. Opportunities, one, coed volleyball in the fall, MS indoor track in the winter, basketball skill clinics in the spring. Mid-Wa- Waukesha comparative schools, state is looking at equity among student groups and competition. Updated MOA for school resource offices.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Any questions for Dr. Knight? Okay, thank you. School personnel committee, no meeting. Executive committee, no meeting. Student rep.
Okay. Here at Fitchburg High School, we have recently been commended as one of the top 7,000 high schools in, in the United States of America. In addition to that, we have had 13 students be commended for having exceptionally high PSAT scores and high GPAs as well. At our last student advisory council meeting, the, the primary topic of discussion was vaping at Fitchburg High School. I'm not entirely familiar with, we didn't come to a clear conclusion on exactly how that should be handled, but the discussions were more of like a proactive holistic approach where we do more health education on the dangers of vaping and on the dangers of tobacco and drug usage as in during the teenage years. In addition, there are some issues with sanitariness, with how sanitary the bathrooms are, particularly the women's bathrooms at Fitchburg High School, which is making certain students uncomfortable going there. And particularly the big concerns with the female students as opposed to the male students, which is again, kind of going with the vaping thing. Vaping continues to be an issue in our bathrooms, even though it has considerably declined due to our hall monitor system. That is pretty much, that is all I have to say for today.
Any questions, Mr. Gallo? Thank you. Can we have approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting of April 4th, 2022?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. None, no communication. Do we have any public comments at this time? Jonathan, anything, anybody online?
No, no one registered. No one's there.
At this time, we'll have the superintendent's report.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Stevens. Tonight, we had planned to have a recognition event with a student in our Footsteps to Brilliance Program, literacy program, that's actually supported by the United Way of North Central Massachusetts. Unfortunately, that student was unable to be here tonight, so we will try to have that student back at a future school committee meeting and hope the student is, is well. Thank you, Kathy, for, for coming. Tonight, we have Byron Woodman from Select Energy to talk about proposed solar installation up at Fitchburg High School. And this would really represent a continuation of the investment in solar energy that started several years ago between the city and Select when we first put solar installations on the roofs of Memorial Middle School and Rhine Gold Elementary. So those two installations were very successful whereby the city entered into purchase power agreements with, with Select. And tonight, Byron is here to give an update on the presentation regarding Fitchburg High School and future plans to help make Fitchburg a little bit greener.
Thank you. Should I, should I stand at the podium, or is this okay here? Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time tonight. Over the last year or so, I've been working with, with the city on, on the Longs Joe solar system, which is, we've been through interconnection and the interconnection approval process and engineering, and we're getting ready to mobilize on the next steps there, so that's really exciting. And in parallel, looking at, at the city, there were a couple other sites which looked very promising for solar. And one of them was the high school parking lot. And the other one is Crocker as the new Crocker School. Once the roof is, is installed and the envelope of the building is complete, and we're working with initial designs on that too. So that's another parallel conversation as well, too. But tonight's focus is, is obviously on, on the high school. And I've prepared some slides just in case people had not been following the process for the last few years, just to orient in terms of what the program is and how that it works, and then we can spend the majority of the time discussing to that, you know, the high school and if anybody has questions about it. So a little bit about power options, the, the program which makes this possible, as well as Select Energy, our company. A little bit about how the program specifically works, the savings and the environmental benefits associated with it, and then just questions and next steps. In terms of power options, if, if you're not already familiar with it, it's a large nonprofit aggregation consortium that enables municipalities and nonprofits to secure energy and renewable energy and solar at discounted rates. And so it's, it's a large buying consortium, they're buying power, and with that comes specific agreements that are favorable to municipalities. So this program is enabled through the power options program. Select Energy is based in Hopkinton. We were founded in 2009, and our mission is to build and finance and operate solar systems. And we have about 80 employees now in Hopkinton and across the state. We've installed over 550 commercial projects in the Commonwealth, and we operate 650. So we'll, we'll build the projects ourselves, and then we have an entire services team that goes out and makes sure that they're operating correctly. We've done over 80 power purchase agreements with municipalities throughout the Commonwealth, so this would be an extension of that, of that program. So in terms of, as we advance with it, the expectations are that there's no upfront cost from the municipality, in this case, the city of Fitchburg. We do the entire installation and financing. The term of the agreement is 25 years for canopies and 20 years for roofs. And one of the core assumptions for that is as long as that building is operating or that facility is operating, you're going to be buying electricity. So to the extent that we can help finance a project and have it come from, you know, clean renewable solar at a discount, we're able to, through the federal tax credit and through the state incentive program, to provide a savings through to the city. And that's like the underpinnings for how this, this program works. And again, all the agreements are, are pre-approved and pre-negotiated actively with, with power So in terms of, in terms of the specific work that we do, we do all of the engineering. We do, in this case, all the geotech. We study the ground. We do all the analysis associated with the engineering and connecting to, to the buildings itself. And then, once the system is up, we do a walkthrough with the high school to make sure everybody's familiar with it and how it works. So this is the part that is obviously specific to the high school. We looked initially at the teacher, the teacher's lot alone, and then we realized that there's a very nice, unshaded portion of the parking lot for the students to the north of the school. And so we looked at what might be involved with actually connecting the two systems together and then going behind the meter to power, to power the high school. High school's a very large facility. The two systems together, I don't know if I can point with this, I can. So the two systems together here represent about 50%, 47% of the high school's overall annual consumption. And currently, you're buying energy at, for this facility, your cost to compare is this 14.14 cents per kilowatt hour. And in financing the system, we would be providing a rate to the high school of 13.7 cents. And so for each kilowatt hour we create, you receive the savings. And obviously, there'll be more production during the summer months than at winter, you know, at, at night. But these, the forecasting for the systems is incredibly accurate at this point. So we've got the historical data for the high school. We've got the historical weather-related data from systems in Fitchburg, from systems we own, and also national and regional weather data. And so, you know, these projections will be generating here 784,000 kilowatt hours per year. The savings in year one is 3%. And then, as energy continues to get more expensive over time, the high school's rate remains fixed for the 25-year term. And so it's, it's almost as though you could go to, you know, the gas tank, you know, 18 or 24 months ago and fill up with 25 years' worth of, you know, gas and then be protected from future energy rates. I mean, it's kind of like that. The environmental benefits are huge. I mean, I think there's oftentimes several core drivers for why an institution advances with renewable energy. And probably half the time, it's, it's for savings alone. Sometimes it's just support a distributed energy grid, so it's, it's just better for the energy grid to have multiple points of generation through a grid as opposed to just one, you know, anchor source of energy. And the other reason is, is the environment. And that's, that's really what attracted me to solar and wind energy 20 years ago, initially with wind energy and then, and then solar. So that, that's truly my passion and the company's passion. And in this case, the annual avoided CO2 is what happens when you compare the amount of generation that we'd be creating from this system against the national average. So when you look at the energy grid across the United States, different regions have different energy CO2 offsets. In some areas, more energy comes from nuke plants, and some natural gas, and some is coal, some's oil. But for, when you look at it at a national level, it's the equivalent of about 1.2 million kilowatt hours, I mean, 1.2 million pounds of CO2 each year. And then, over the, the term, the 25-year term, it's about 4,000, 14,200 tons of CO2 on a national level. So one, one thing that we did take a look at here is there, there are different assumptions that go into the model. We did assume prevailing wage based on the overall energy consumption relative to the usage. We've looked at, based on, on current Massachusetts legislation, a pilot would not be required. So that's not in this, this model. It, it could be. But based on current Massachusetts legislation, there would not be a pilot. We're not looking at, at the bonding. We're thinking that this is going to be, the incentives will be associated with Block Five, and we're assuming the energy rates, based on historical performance, will be increasing at a rate of about 2% per year. And that's based on, on, it's consistent with guidance that comes from the Commonwealth. So this is, you know, the next slides talk about next steps, the development process, what would be required to advance this in, I guess, in, in my mind and, and based on previous conversations. If all goes well, there's a hope that we could, or a plan that we could install the system next summer, and when the school is a little more quiet. There's a pretty good steady drumbeat of activity that would need to occur between now and next summer. We think it's realistic, and that's the, the remaining couple slides are on that. But I'll, I'll pause here and just see if there, there are questions on this slide.
Any questions?
Yeah, if I may. So all these numbers are assuming, part of the assumptions is that both of these lots will be hooked up successfully with?
Yeah, exactly. Yep, yep. And it's, it's pretty, pretty evenly, you know, the system size, if you look up at the top there, the teacher's lot is about 337 KW. The northern lot is about 369. We're, we would literally be running a conduit to connect the two systems together, and then they connect at the transformer that's, that's a little bit to the south of the northern lot, over by the electrical, the main electrical room for the high school.
And any, and the maintenance of those two canopies are, is that our onus, or?
That's on us, 100% on, on Select's service team. And as part of that, we, we have a, a large knock center that takes in data. All these systems are, are online, so they're constantly producing data in terms of how they're running, right down to the panel and inverter level. We get regular updates on them. We have a team that will dispatch to provide maintenance if and as needed.
Okay. So, and then, so for the 25 years, the reason why the, the partnership was 25 years is just to make sure the institution is still, you know, operational, essentially?
Yep. So, so the 25-year term is based on a couple things. One, it's based on the duration of the incentive from Massachusetts is 20 years.
Okay.
The life expectancy for the panels, or the, the warranty period for the panel is 25 years. The financing for a project, it's almost like if you, you buy a house and you have your mortgage, the financing improves for a longer term. So the institutions that, that we work with, particularly the municipalities, have a long view. So, you know, planning out 25 years, 50 years, 100 years, like, they're looking way out. And so it's consistent with, you know, the foreseeable use of that lot and, and the high school.
So your company's eight, 12 years old? Eight years old?
Yep, two, yep.
So you haven't, like, renewed any projects that you've, you know, that you, when you were starting early? It hasn't been the point where you've?
None, none of our projects have, have come to their end of their cycle yet.
Okay.
There is compelling data, certainly from projects that were built during the 1970s, early 1980s, that they're still producing better than expected. So it's really no moving parts in the panels. They're there, you set them, you watch over the system and the, the electrical equipment, and you're, you're pretty good to go.
And the only reason that you put, sorry to hog the mic, guys, but the only reason that you put the PPA rate escalator is just to, again, kind of confirm that it's flat and that's one of the?
It is flat for the 25-year term.
Right.
The reason why it's, it's highlighted there is, is because it is at the discretion of, of the municipality or the city. And some institutions will say, well, jeez, you know, rather than, if you have zero escalation, you get the highest savings over time. But, but depending on what the objectives are of each institution, they may prefer greater savings in the earlier years, in which case, we could put an escalator. That PPA rate would be a little bit lower so that it would advance the savings earlier on in the term. But in terms of maximizing the savings and the consistency of knowing exactly what your PPA rate is for the full term, we, we don't typically apply an escalator.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Reynolds?
Um, when?
Reynolds?
Thank you.
Oh, did you, you want to be recognized?
Thank you.
Yeah.
When you say a canopy solar, are you referring to a cover, something like Henry Haywood Hospital has in there?
Question.
Yep, and they're actually, I have some, I have some pictures here towards the, towards the back, if I can advance through. It is, it would look like, let's see if it, there they are.
Yep.
It would look like that. So these are long spans. So the, this would be very similar to the ones to the north. And then, we also would be using what's called single tilt, so it's one vertical post. And then you'd have a single tilt facing towards the south that, that we were, would be using for the teacher's lot. And that's just based on the width of the area. So when you drive through the teacher's lot, there's like that one main corridor area where like, you know, the, the little plantings are in the middle, so it'd be down that area. where like, you know, the little plantings are in the middle, so it'd be down that area.
At the end, who owns the system, you or the city?
We own the system. Yep. We would be owning the system to, you know, and core to our business objective. We want to own the systems that we're developing and generating from to create a portfolio.
Are there any municipalities that are paying for their own system and they own it and probably have a much higher savings?
Some, I mean, some, the way that that would work is for some institutions, if they were building a new facility and they were going out for financing or a grant to build a fire station or something like that, they might include the cost of the solar system within that project financing. Typically, what we're seeing across the board is for existing structures that are advancing with solar, it's typically a PPA arrangement where they're not raising funds through the municipality.
And might you have excess energy that could be turned into the city?
So, not from this project. There are other projects which could potentially generate excess that could then be used. And we are actually working, not to get distracted from this presentation, but we have identified projects within Unitile territory that would provide energy to the city. And that would be in addition to these, so it would be part of the solar portfolio for the city itself. But just based on the production versus this building's usage, it is all going, it is all going to the high school.
And you've, this is, you've reached a certain stage of development. At this point, you've been working with members of the city and of the school committee up to date? For how many years? How long have you been working on this?
The first?
Several years. I go back to the beginning of it. And power options, select energy has been doing an outstanding job providing us with this service. And I know Mrs. Cragan's going to be happy to see this particular project coming on board because this is something we suggested three or four years ago, or, you know. So, yes, we have been working through the Building Needs Committee and Superintendent and the business manager.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
The, yes. So with the canopy, what's the height from the parking lot to the top in terms of, obviously, like, a big dump truck probably wouldn't be able to go through, but vans, SUVs, it's not an issue at all for height clearance at all?
No, it's standard bridge height. So we will look, we do take, you know, certain vehicle types, like recycling vehicles, like the large, you know, recycling trucks that we'd go through. We would make sure that they, either the canopies are not on a path for that. We look at emergency vehicles. If they do need to be higher, we can go about 13 and a half feet on the, you know, at the high point. But typically, they're around 11 feet.
Gardner Hospital has one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question pertaining to the students. So I'm sure you're under the impression that there's like a lot of young drivers at Pittsburgh High School, especially in the student parking lot. So would the insurance burden, if one of them were to accidentally hit or damage the thing? I'm not going to hit or damage your solar panels.
Question.
But I know people who might. So is that insurance burden on the school, or is that covered under the maintenance?
So, so the systems are fully insured. So, and we do understand that there are moving vehicles around them. So it may not just be the students.
Yeah.
Typically, you have a vertical post that goes into the earth. It goes down about 13 or 14 feet typically, so they go way down. And that's for wind speeds, wind load, you know, seismic events. There's all kinds of geotech engineering that goes into that. Then there's a pillar that goes around the post. It's almost like a concrete base that comes up a little bit. And so, though we would not, you know, though we would hope that someone would not bump into it, they are secure and, you know, that's a risk that is engineered into the project.
Okay.
So Frank, so when senior next year and you have a car, think about getting one of those senior parking spots because it's going to have cover over it when it snows and rains, and you come out that back door, you're going to be fine.
Definitely, Mr. Stevens.
I have a few more if I can.
Yes.
One other question. So with the canopy, is there lighting underneath the canopy?
Yeah.
There is. So at nighttime, it's not, it's, you're not secluded under a dark area like a parking garage?
No, they're LED, yeah. And we'll do like a whole, you know, little LED schematic that we'd share with the city ahead of time. And that's part of it. One of the things that just, for me personally, is exceptionally cool about a canopy is you can see everything. When you actually like look at the canopy, you can see the panels, you can see how they're connected, you can see the inverters. You can see how they come back to the school, and it makes for a really neat learning lab. So for students who are interested in solar, how it works, it's much more convenient to show solar on a canopy than it is on a rooftop project. So, you know, that's another.
That's a great point.
Benefit as well, too. In terms of, I just want to be respectful of everybody's time, just in terms of, in terms of next steps, we've done our homework to date. Our, you know, our in-house electrician has been to the site, our designers have looked at it, I've been to the site. Really, the key piece now is utility approval. So there's two pieces. One is the utility approval and understanding from Unitile's perspective that we can actually put energy on that line. There's no reason why we think we can't. They actually met us on site to discuss the transformer a while ago. So I think they're aware of it, but we need to file a formal application and then secure the incentives. So to do that, and kind of consistent with the process and with Longstow, there's a letter of intent that's about a one and a half-page document that essentially says, "In a good faith effort, we're going to continue to advance funds and capital towards building the project. We'd ask that the lot not be used for other purposes during the feasibility study." Other purposes, agreeing to put a large cell tower, you know, in the middle of it, or other purposes that we may not have foreseen. And so it's pretty much a good faith effort. We do our homework, we validate the financing. We have an agreement that, negotiating with Longstow, so it's going to follow a very similar form to that. And then, as soon as that's signed, we actually start to do the next round, which includes the geotech studies themselves. And that may range around 50 to 70 thousands of dollars. And depending on the scope that's required as they get into that work, the building sets, the construction sets for the canopies, the fabrication, and then we order the equipment. And then, as part of that, is obviously timing around the operations of the school, working with the facilities team. And there's plenty of areas for staging on site, you know, so we'd work very closely with the school and the onsite staff in terms of our timing and how the project would be installed. And then after it's built, it's the system operation. Sometimes you'd see someone in a select truck coming by to either investigate or provide maintenance if and as needed. We do a formal handoff where we'll present, you know, the full package to the city and provide any guidance that they need from an operations perspective. And then, and that's it. We support with the educational materials and public relations. So that's, thank you. Any other questions, I'll be happy to, yeah.
I just have one question. So when you were showing the cost per kilowatt hour, where, and it looked like the difference was four tenths of one cent?
Let me just go back here. It's going to come up in a second, I think. So our price is the 13.7 cents per kilowatt hour, and the overall electric cost is the 14.4, is what you're currently paying to Unitile for that energy.
So we're placing 14.14 with 13.7, correct?
For the full term. Yeah, right, right, right.
So do we make it up in volume, roughly $40,000 a year in savings?
Over the term. So in the first year?
Are we avoiding other costs as well, like distribution charges?
So, right. So there is demand charges?
Right.
That are being reduced as well, and that's not factored in here. So in year one, you know, the estimated savings is right around $3,500, $3,400. But because the volume is so high, as standard energy rates increase, if you look at the chart, you know, towards the middle and end of it, the, excuse me, the savings per kilowatt hour increase, you know, significantly over the term. And there are also the demand charges and the other charges as well that you're offsetting as part of that.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, just a few. So what's the total cost ballpark? I don't know if you have those numbers yet without all the plans confirmed, but the cost for the project?
That's a good question. I don't have, I don't have that number right here with me.
What could you definitely say? That it will be less than?
Yeah, I would, I'd say probably close to $3 million.
Okay.
Probably between two and a half and three is what I'm, you know, I'd want to confirm that.
Yeah, okay.
And the reason, the reason for quite a broad range is it has to do with the cost of the steel on the market. It has to do with all the unknowns associated with the geotech and what's involved with that and the trenching. Really, we start with a very high level based on other projects that we've done, but until we actually get confirmation from the utility and the structural engineers and the civil engineers, we operate with a range.
All right. And last concern is, well, not the last, but next question is winter maintenance. You know, if there's blizzards, if there's snow on top of the solar panels, are they to a slant so it falls off? Do we have to, do we?
Yep, yeah, there'd be no requirements on the city to do any maintenance for it at all. So the, you know, the snow would sit there and then eventually it would melt off when it warms up. From a plowing perspective, you know, typically, you know, with a regular pickup or a typical plow, they can just go like right underneath it. The cars that would be underneath the canopy would obviously not have, you know, the snow. It's not, it's open to the environment, so to the extent that it's windy or blowing, the cars will get snow under them. But it's, but, you know, the heavy snow would not be on it.
Okay. I mean, my first thought is, you know, concern of an extreme storm where it would require us to put, you know, our people up there to at least clean it off once if it gets to a certain threshold?
No.
Saying no?
No, nope. No, they, it would meet all building code, snow loads and weight loading and everything else. There would literally be no expectation for the city to provide any maintenance on it.
Okay. And you mentioned earlier, Unitile territory. Do you guys, as part of your business model, to exclusively look at institutions that are within Unitile territory?
Do you say, do we work exclusively with them?
Is it part to target institutions that are within Unitile territory or exclusively within Unitile territory? Is there a partnership between the two?
So we work, yeah, so Unitile and Eversource and National Grid are the three primary default utilities, and then obviously, there's, you know, regional municipal light plants as well. But in Unitile and all of them, they have very standard processes that we work with. So they would be the authority to which we would need to apply, and then they do their studies. So I wouldn't necessarily call it a partnership. I think it's more, they have authority of the lines, and we want to make sure that we're doing things in compliance with their system.
Is most of your projects within one system, one company's system next to another? Do you have a lot of projects with Unitile?
We do. We have projects, I mean?
Or more than, I should say, do you have more projects in Unitile than the other companies?
Well, no, the Unitile footprint is much smaller, much, much smaller than the Eversource or National Grid. So if you look at the total projects that we've done, more of them would be a National Grid and Eversource than Unitile. But we do have a long history working here, too.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Further questions? Thank you, Byron.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So if we can go back to the original agenda and the sequence, we have a recipient of the United Way of North Central Mass Reading Winter Challenge. We have Lily Pendleton here, who's a pre-K student over at Ryan Gold Elementary and in Katie Finn's class. And she was recognized recently with a visit from Koryang, who's the president of the local United Way, and with her parents and grandparents. And tonight, Lily is back with her grandmother and Kathy Brady. So Kathy, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. As Superintendent Jokla already said, Lily placed second in the United Way Winter Reading Challenge, which was to ensure that students during the time from December 20th to January 20th didn't let their reading skills slip. So out of the 12 cities and towns that participated in this through the Innovation Zone, Lily placed second at the age of four. She read 103 minutes per week, 15 minutes each day in her classroom, thanks to her pre-K teacher, Katie Finn, who is joining us as well. And Lily's grandmother is here with us, Mrs. Pendleton. And her grandparents and her parents read with her on a daily basis. So what's wonderful about this is not only that Lily placed second, that her reading comprehension right now is scored at the end of the first grade level, and she's in pre-K. So she has done a fabulous job. And we were just in the hallway talking about next steps for her, but the next steps are things that students partway through kindergarten or first grade would be working on in terms of their ELA. So she has just done a fabulous job, and we're all very proud of her. Lily, did you want to step up here and just let everybody know how old you are? We practice this in the hallway.
Can she?
She may not, she may not use, oh, she may not use words, but she's going to tell you, yes, the first week in March, she turned five years old. So she accomplished these tasks and these skills as a four-year-old.
Nice.
Very impressive.
Thank you, Lily.
Congratulations.
Can anybody take a photo of that?
I'll take a photo of it, yeah.
You want to hold up your hand, Lily, and show them how old you are?
Nice job.
I wanted to let you know as well that the app that we use, Footsteps to Brilliance, and we've partnered with them, and we're in the middle of our second five-year license. We're seeing some enormous growth on the part of all of our students. And children who can read on grade level by the end of kindergarten are more likely to be able to read by the end of third grade and less likely than to drop out of school. So this is an enormous goal for us. And working as the early literacy coordinator, I am committed to making sure that we bring this to all of the agencies in town. We partner with the YMCA, Children's Aid and Family Services, MoC Head Start, MoC Family Childcare as well. And we are dedicated to ensuring that kids have access to literacy at an early age. Yes. So thank you so much for having us.
Thank you, Kathy, for coming. Thank you.
So you mentioned there were 12 cities and towns participated.
Yes.
Do you know approximately how many students participated in this project throughout all 12? And where Lily finished second out of how many? And how, and some who are probably much older than she is as well, correct?
It's true. The students who placed first and third were both from Gardner and, in fact, are older than her. It's difficult to measure the number of students who participate. They don't check a box saying, yes, I'm going to participate. We just look at their data on the use of the app.
Okay.
Okay.
So there were hundreds and hundreds of children that were using the app during that time.
Yeah. Good job, Lily.
Great job.
Thank you so much.
Good job, everybody.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
For members who don't know, Ms. Brady has been one of our outstanding educators in Fitchburg for, I won't say how long, Ms. Brady. We've worked together and.
My first administrator that I ever worked with was Mr. Stevens.
And I put in that book room at Rhinegold.
Yes, yes, you did. So it's nice to see so many of you former students. When I was principal.
Yes. I remember Ms. Brady from when I was in elementary school. She was a very good principal.
Yes, and a wonderful student as well. So nice to see everybody.
Can you say one more thing? I think what you described, the fact that you as the coordinator, you as the person in the classroom, and you as parents and grandparents.
Yep.
How much that makes a difference when everybody is involved with a young student to encourage, not only helping them read, but reading to them makes such a difference in the success of what that student's going to achieve over many years in school.
Absolutely.
Thank you all for doing what you do.
Thank you.
And we also, Katie Finn is actually her preschool teacher, and she's joined us today, too.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Cool.
Budget items.
Budget items. We have a couple donations tonight. Have Mr. Schalf quickly review those two items. One donation for Fitchburg High and another for South Street Elementary. And also a proposal that was discussed at the resource subcommittee meeting regarding the summer pay increase for the proposed summer programming for the summer, which is not too far from now, so.
So we have three donations. One for $3,000 was donated from IC Federal Credit Union to Fitchburg High School, Mr. Roach, to be used for gifts for the class, scholarships for the class of 2022. We have two other donations to our enrollment center from Christopher Alphen and Dolphin Insulation. These were floaty swimming vests, 200 of them, at a $3,000 estimated value, and canvases to be used for artwork across the district. Those were, I believe, 60 boxes with 12 pieces of each with an estimated value of $4,500. So thank you to the team for submitting these donations. We also have an action item in front of you this evening to increase summer pay as we go into the summer programming. This was included in the packet, but I'll review it very quickly. Looking at our 21st Century Paris, increase from $17 an hour to $20 an hour. Our special education Paris, which work in our special education summer program from 18 to 2250. And the difference between those two are typically $2.50 to $0.60, and that's why there was an increase for working with the specialized programs. Uncertified teachers would stay at 35, and that's what they received last year. Certified teachers would have, go from 35 to 45, nurses from 40 to 45, which would give them the same compensation. And then our related service providers at 45, and our speech and language assistance in CODA, Mr. Thompson, you might have to help me out with the.
Occupational therapist.
Occupational therapist, actually from $25 to $30. And that's recommended to not only just recruit, but this is also an adjustment in pay, which has not taken place in many years.
I have a question. Is anybody, or who is familiar with Christopher Alphen and the Dolphin Insulation Company? Who made the gifts here of the swimming vests and the art?
Yeah. This person came to be familiar with the school department through connection of Luisa Fernandez, who works in our Family Outreach Center. And he actually became originally involved in helping make bed frames for students. And he's one of these people who tries to do good deeds and help people, and he came across people who are willing to make donation of these supplies, and he thought of us. And that's how the story, that's what happened.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Christopher Alphen.
Any further questions? If not, can we have a motion to bundle? 22-155 through 22-159.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
To bundle.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion to accept.
Motion to accept the bundle?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At this time, we're going to go into executive session for the purposes of negotiations and return only to adjourn. Mrs. Greenleaf, Dolly.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
We are in executive session.
Thank you.
Executive session.